Sorry. Oh, all right, it's 6:30. I'd like to call to order the April 2022 meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do we know this?
One nation under God.
Sorry about that, Chris. So it appears that with Ken not having logged in yet, at this point Josh will be the voting member, and if Ken joins, then it will revert to Ken. Do I have a motion for the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that was Chris. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Does anyone have any changes for the minutes? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Sanjay has seconded. All in favor? Or I guess do a roll call would be quicker.
Aye.
Chairman McHenry?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Michael?
Aye.
Member Roba?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. And first we have a presentation.
Okay, Danielle Kitteridge, Senior Planner, likely a new face for you all, so did join the town in September. So I'm give a presentation updated on different transportation projects going on around the town and in the region as well. This presentation is for all of you, so if there are questions that pop up along the way, you know, feel free to ask those because there's a lot of different topics and it might be difficult at the end to, you know, remember some of those. So I'm happy if you have questions along the way. Let me see if I can. All right, so the first thing I want to start with is the Town's Comprehensive Transportation Plan. The current plan was adopted in 2019, so this does house the visions for Morrisville as far as roadways and multimodal transportation strategies and a lot of what we do in the decisions, we rely on this sort of as our guide. So I want to make sure that I do mention the transportation plan. It is actively used and helps provide that vision through 2040 for the town. What I hope to cover today is looking at roadway projects and sidewalk projects, findings from an intersection study, improvement study, as well as regional transportation projects happening. As far as roadways, I'd like to talk about four roadways in particular to give you some updates on what's happening with those. The first one is Airport Boulevard Extension. This is shown here as a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, so it would go from the end of Garden Square Lane over to NC 54. It's shown here in the middle. And what I'm going to focus on is the Phase 1 portion of it. Phase 2 is currently unfunded, so we'll just talk about the Phase 1 for right now. And this project, and let me go ahead and zoom out just a tad, let's see. Nice if this had a... So this project is looking at a new roadway. It'd be four lanes. On the one side, there would be a five-foot sidewalk. On the other side, a 10-foot multi-use path. And we are in the, the town has initiated the project, NC DOT is managing it, so it has begun the right-of-way acquisition phase, which is currently happening, looking at doing that through October, and that this project would be moving forward for construction in sometime in 2023. This is just an overview of the roadway itself, showing the connection from Garden Square Lane. There would be a signal at Town Hall Drive, as well as a traffic light signal at Church Street. Some of the questions that came up originally with the plan was this Indian Creek Trail crossing here does have, will have what's called a pedestrian hawk beacon, and that is a pedestrian activated. It's essentially like a red light that would, cars would be required to stop for pedestrians or bicyclists crossing at that intersection where the trail crosses the road. So those are kind of a few highlights for that project. The next one is McCrimmon Parkway Widening. So this goes from around Davis...
Before you go forward, so the Phase 2 is not yet funded, right?
Yes.
And the Phase 2, is it, yeah, what's the plan for the, you know, railway line crossover?
Oh, so in the, in the Phase 2, there would be a flyover over the railroad tracks connecting over to the other part of Airport Boulevard, and that would be how they would get over the railroad tracks. So it's a much more expensive portion of the project as well.
But that's, that's primarily the reason why Phase 2 currently seems to be unfunded.
Yeah, and why, yeah, divided into two phases. Currently, that is the thinking that there would be a flyover to cross the railroad tracks and over NC 54.
Thanks.
So for McCrimmon Parkway, this, we're looking at from around Davis Drive going to NC 54. This is a widening project. It would take the road from two lanes to four lanes, and then at the part where it would reach to NC 54, there would be a flyover at that portion as well. So getting rid of the at-grade crossing at the railroad tracks. This project is estimated to begin construction next year. It's looking to be let for construction in April of 2023. So there is always changing timelines on these types of projects, but it is getting closer to happening. It's a very large project considering the road widening and the flyover as well. I did want to point out two areas, and I know that sometimes these graphics are a little tiny with all the lines on it, but looking at both ends of the project. And this is the intersection of Davis Drive and McCrimmon Parkway. And to make sure I get the wording right on this, it's an interesting intersection. I don't know if you're familiar with the diverging diamonds that are happening at some of the different interchanges. So if you imagine, it's sort of like half of a diverging diamond in what they call a displaced left turn intersection in which this going, you know, on here, the sort of up and down is your Davis Drive, but the lanes would cross over opposing traffic, and then if you were making a left-hand turn onto McCrimmon, it would allow for less conflict with the oncoming traffic. So it is a little bit of a, something different than we normally see at intersections, so I did want to point that out as what's being proposed here.
So it's a crossover, so I see the light signal. So there will be a signal back where the, the turned lanes break off? Is that some interesting synchronization to go on there?
Yes, it'll, it'll be, yeah, it's different than what I've seen before, but it's supposed to be a safer alternative for this intersection.
So would that mean the current stoplight at McCrimmon, sorry, Airport Boulevard and Davis Drive, that would continue to stay because this, those two stoplights will be close by?
Yeah, that one would still, it's, I think it's far enough down that that stoplight would still continue to stay there.
Okay.
So, all right, then it goes off the edge of the page. So now you have to have storage lanes in three different locations, four, I mean, like, so you've got two storage lanes actually turning left, and then what happens at the previous light where that same number of people have to wait to then cross over?
Are you talking about further?
Like down where you're showing there right now? Like, there's got to be storage for all the people who are going to fill up two whole lanes later. I mean, have we just moved it down the road, the problem?
So I did, it did get chopped off in here to see how far the turning lanes do go southward for the stacking. This is an NC DOT project, so I can always, I'm sure there's some traffic numbers that they have looked at as well to propose the design. Fortunately, I don't have those off the top of my head to, to do that. But yeah, I would have looked at some of the stacking and then probably signal timing to make sure that enough flow is, is going through there as well. I don't know if you guys are still looking at that, because I was going to go down to the, the other side of the project as well, looking at the section where the flyover would be occurring, right where my mouse is kind of going back and forth. This is the current crossing, at-grade crossing along the railroad tracks. That would go away. There would be some access provided for existing property owners, but the roadway would curve upward, and there would be sort of the bridge-like structure, and it would come down the other side. In order to get to NC 54, there is a little bit of a, I guess a turnout road that would take you down there, depending on which direction you were going. So that's the configuration that's being proposed for this section of, of the project.
And this part is all funded right now?
This is, yeah, the construction is funded. And it's expected to start, yeah, in 2023 and be one and a half to two-year project to occur.
So if it is funded, is there a reason why we are waiting another year?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
If the project is already funded, is there a reason why we are waiting another year for construction to begin?
As far as, it is an NC DOT project, so it's 100% funded by them. They are finishing up their right-of-way acquisition, as well as finalizing some of their designs, so funding for next year construction. And as far as looking at, I guess when I say funded, it's, it's in the schedule. The next project is looking at the widening of NC 54. I know there's lots of talk about widening of all of NC 54 and perhaps the need for this, but this is only focused on around Shiloh Glen Drive down to Perimeter Park. So we're looking up by the 540 interchange down to Perimeter Park Drive. This project is actually on, currently on the same timeline as the McCrimmon Parkway Widening and Flyover, so we're looking at construction starting in FY '23. And this is a widening from two lanes to four lanes. It will vary around the interchange of NC 54, just due to the need for extra turn lanes. So I just generally say two to four lanes. This project will have on the northern side, a 10-foot multi-use path that will be incorporated into it, but it is another project that's moving forward relatively soon for construction. The last roadway project I wanted to touch on is Morrisville Carpenter Road Widening.
Before, before you go forward, so tell us about the extension of 54 from McCrimmon to, at the very least, you know, Cary Parkway, sorry, Western Boulevard. Any thoughts on those? I believe there was something to do with railway, you know, acquisition of land from the railways.
So you're talking about, you said McCrimmon?
Down to, not that way, just keep coming south.
Going down towards the Airport Boulevard?
Yeah, more down towards Airport Boulevard, no, not that way.
Oh.
Just take follow 54 all the way down.
Oh, 54, sorry, that you're talking about McCrimmon, yes, down, down this way. None of this, as far as, are you asking as far as status of the project or widening?
Is there any, I mean, you mentioned there is some discussion going on, but is that a discussion just within the town, or is this really at the NC DOT level that they are considering this seriously?
Yeah, I think more so the discussion, knowing that there is, you know, a congestion and need there. Right now, there is no funding or a plan in place for the actual widening of that section of NC 54. One thing I was going to touch on at the end of the presentation as well, which we are anxiously awaiting, is the State Transportation Improvement Program, known as the STIP. The current one that's out is from 2020 to 2029. There was different, projects are becoming more expensive, some different funding issues. So in the, the STIP that's coming out now, they weren't accepting any new projects, but looking at prioritizing existing projects, looking at the timelines. So we are anxious to see where some of that funding will go in the new STIP that comes out, which goes out to 2033. The draft is supposed to come out next month. Maybe we'll see something on NC 54. There's a lot of regional projects going on, but right now, nothing currently on the books.
Just as a follow-up to that, I'm sorry, coordination of the project. So we think about the second phase of Airport Boulevard going, I know it's not funded, but going from Town Hall to Church Street, and then the alignment of 54. Is, is there sort of a, a view to align those two projects to happen at the time, or is it way just too early to tell?
I think it's too early to tell. A lot of it would depend on how much the projects cost, the funding, mechanisms that would be used, but I think consideration would need to be given, knowing that there's, you know, different needs and projects that could be down the pipeline and considering those.
And then just as a follow-up to that, is there any assessment that was done to look at the traffic with Phase 1 of Airport Boulevard project that would push it to Church Street?
Yes, and that is one, as far as, well, understanding what traffic conditions would be like.
Post-project, yeah.
Yeah, post-project, knowing some of the other development that's happening in the area. Currently, we have a light that's proposed at the intersection of Church Street and Airport Boulevard. Was sort of on the threshold of being warranted, but knowing that there could be, you know, perhaps increased traffic due to some development, that there will be a signal at that location. But I'm guessing you're also looking at it from a different angle as well, and I didn't know if I captured.
Yeah, so specifically, so there's congestion in Church Street now. We're going to widen the road that leads to that, that will likely increase that congestion. And then there'll be a pause until Phase 2 flows that through 54, and then you have that similar problem at 54, and then there's that pause until that gets widened. So I guess if, has it been any, like, modeling as to what that does in the increment to the folks around Church Street and trying to get on Town Hall with the new center that's coming in?
Yeah, I don't think there was, based on the modeling and the need for not having a need for a light currently, that there wasn't going to be a significant increase based on what is known for Phase 1, but we did ask for a light, just, just knowing that there may be development pressures down, down the road that could impact it, and having a light would improve the flow and access at that intersection.
Just following up on what Tim was asking, since this Airport Boulevard is cutting through residential area and then school, is there any plan to put on, put up sound barriers around the roads?
Currently, we are looking at as far as having a school zone that's associated with the project, and it just depends on the different situations and how close the, there are some different buffers that are along the roadway that exist based on, you know, what's currently out there. We also look at kind of what is on Town Hall Drive, so there's no fencing that's being proposed along the schools currently with that. We are looking at school zone for that section.
What about near the residential area, because it is cutting through, you know, two subdivisions. The road is going through them, right? So any thoughts of putting in sound buffers?
There will be, as far as most, most of it's going to fit, the roadway is going to fit within the existing right-of-way that goes through there. There may be some slight areas, but we'll have to look at in a little more detail if there are places where there's a bit more impact and how to address that, but there's no current, you know, wall or fence or anything. If there are existing fences, those would be replaced if they were disturbed.
Okay.
All right, so let's see, we have finished the road projects. Oh, and this was just...
Circling back real quick.
Go ahead.
The Airport Boulevard Extension, Phase 2, forgive me if you've already said this. I know that cost estimates change seemingly daily with the way inflation is going right now, but what would be the projected cost for Phase 2 in totality?
Well, in the, in the transportation plan, it was done based on a 20, I think, 2017 number, which was $25 million. So I would assume that is several million more in today's dollars, but in 2017, it was estimated at $25 million.
Thank you.
And don't remember if I fully got to this one, but the Morrisville Carpenter Road Widening. Everyone's quite familiar with the construction going on out there. We are looking at hopefully completion sometime in summer 2022, and this is going from two lanes to four lanes, a lot of activity with more so new pavement, road widening here around Town Hall Drive. Further down, there's a lot more width of pavement where it's easier to resurface, put in landscape islands as well. So there's not as much activity down there right now, but we'll be seeing some, some of that as well to have the full four lanes.
So, I mean, does 20, summer 2022 seem realistic?
What was that?
Do they feel like summer 22 is realistic?
As of around December, that was what it was, and we still do have that shown on our website as well, so I think so.
And then I'm just, and you may not know this, when are they going to close off lifts from Church and Page Street?
That I don't know for sure, because it will, there was some conversation around it. It will be in the near future. I'm trying to think if it was more around May time, but if you like, we can always check, I could check with the engineering department.
I'm just, I mean, it's something that should have happened 10-plus years ago. And it just keeps getting kicked down the road and kicked down the road and kicked down the road, and it's going to happen at some point. It's in the plan. It just feels like every time we have to stop for those people who are turning out of there, it just calls us backups through the work zone, and I'm just confused as to why they didn't try to close that off already.
And I think once all the full lanes are there and the median is there as well.
And is there going to be any kind of education campaign, like signage, to let people know, hey, this is no longer going to be a road soon? I mean...
There is. As far as working with the adjacent property owners, I know engineering does work with them as far as notifying what's coming up with especially just along the segment around here as far as changes the road patterns and letting them know as well.
Before you go off this chart, we have had extensive discussions on this before, but I'll ask this again. Now we are getting four lanes all the way up to the railway intersection, and then it is two ways, two lanes post the intersection. We have wondered many times, are we going to keep that intersection at grade? There has, we were shown plans where there was road, that kind of loop around roads. Where is that, all of that discussion currently?
Yeah, so a lot of that goes with the Aviation Parkway Widening Project. That you might be familiar with, and while in 2019, it all got put on hold. It was moving forward, then it got put on hold. It's a DOT-funded project. There were some funding issues going on at DOT as a whole. So that project is shown in the, I mentioned the STIP earlier. In 2029, it is showing a little bit of funding for engineering and right-of-way acquisition. Doesn't really mean a whole lot right now. The rest of the project is shown as unfunded. So we are hoping with the new STIP that comes out, we may have some more timeline on that, but currently, the project got put on hold due to funding, funding issues, and we don't have much more of a specific timeline than what's shown in the STIP right now of 2029 for some more movement on it.
Yeah, I'm less on the timeline as opposed to the design, right? What is, is there thought given to what to do with that intersection, which is a heavy, big intersection, very close to Town Hall, I mean, the, the plans for the Town Hall Center? And so, you know, we keep on coming back to that same discussion that we really need to figure out a good design that will help the flow of traffic, still keep it looking good. And so, at the very least, I would have expected DOT and the town to work and come up with a, you know, proposal or design that, that is feasible.
Yeah, and I think the one that I have seen, wasn't here for the discussion in, in 2019, but the one that, you know, is currently on the books that was moving forward at that point in time is, is still an at-grade crossing that does have the, there's like the loop road. I think you had mentioned, you might be familiar with it, that has the loop road on it to help facilitate some of the, the traffic in the area. But that is the, the current design that's on the books that had been, went through some of the public comment period and was moving forward at the time.
Okay.
All right, on the sidewalk projects. So there's a few projects that I did want to highlight that are going on or will be going on in the near future. So the first project is on Airport Boulevard, and I do apologize that my map, I realized later on, since I was borrowing the base map from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, my McCrimmon extension is not on here. So it's a little bit of a reference point is a little off. But going from McCrimmon up to, making sure I get this right, the Factory Shops Road, we do have some funding to fill in sidewalk gaps. So I provided just an example on the slide that shows there are places where there are gaps in the sidewalk network. So we are looking at filling in sidewalk gaps. The project is expected to start this year, and we'll go out to bid soon.
So, again, right, is there enough foot traffic there that we need to spend that money on filling up that sidewalk versus using that money where, you know, there is an urgent need?
Yeah, and so there's different, I think at one point in time, the town had done some different, looking at all the different sidewalk needs and some prioritization. I don't know where it fell exactly on the list there, but being able to fill in the sidewalk gaps is, you know, important for the overall connectivity, and there's different pots of grant funding for pedestrian versus roadways as well. But it was assessed as, as a need, which is why we did apply it to that area.
You can see there's a path. I mean, there's definitely enough use of it there.
The next one is on Lewis Stevens Drive. So this is a newer project that was awarded for construction funding in FY '23. There is a sidewalk gap on Lewis Stevens Drive highlighted here in, in this orange color connecting over to McCrimmon. I just provided a few views from Google Street Map on this. Design is underway. We'd be looking at just a five-foot sidewalk on the north side of the road. There is, with the residential area around there and a couple different residential areas, there's a bit of foot traffic, and so providing some safe options for people. There will just be on one side of the road, but it's a, a need there. So that project is expected to kick off sometime in FY '23. The last major project I did want to mention is, and I know it's a long segment on here, but it's a Church Street Sidewalk Gap Project. Again, we're looking at filling in gaps along the way with, looking at where there might be just missing sidewalks from both sides of the street, where we might be able to add sidewalks to both sides of the street. This project came together a few years ago, so the project is all, overall has about $2 million for it. When you look at that stretch from Morrisville Carpenter Road to Durham County Line, knowing construction cost as well, we're going to do the best we can to fill in as many gaps as possible, so there may be some prioritization that happens. But this project is looking to begin design soon, and then it has funding for construction in FY '23. Just a few other sidewalk gap projects to mention. There's a couple in progress, looking at some connections to the Morrisville Community Park on NC 54 near the U.S. Postal Service, and then some gaps that were completed around Copley Parkway, Paramount Parkway, and Northwest Cary Parkway. The next thing I want to do is just talk about an intersection improvement study that was completed last year. So this study looked at 10 different intersections, and it looked at current conditions, as well as future conditions at these intersections to... at current conditions as well as future conditions at these intersections to understand what the level of service is. That's going from A to F, and F generally associated with, with failing, either heavy delays or gridlock. And these levels of service were looked at during the peak, peak times. So there was 10 locations. I will walk through each of these just to provide some highlights about what was recommended, how the level of service would be improved for those. And the projects were grouped into three different categories. So the pedestrian-only improvements were generally rated as the highest priority to do. The next kind of group that were looked at is ones that were improved the level of service based on conditions today. And then in a couple cases, there were intersections where in 2040, 2041, there was a need to be addressed and taking a look at how intersection improvements could improve that. I'm not gonna walk through each of these next three tables that actually show sort of the rankings. I'll go over those when I go through the graphics, just because it's easier to have with some visuals. But each item that was studied in the study itself provides a project cost, as well as looking at what is that current level of service? And then if that improvement is implemented, what is the improvement to that level of service? And then an overall prioritization. So these do not move in top priority to low priority. They sort of move around geographically. So I'll make sure that I kind of reference, make reference to the priorities as well as I go along. The first one is just down the street at Town Hall Drive and Downing Glen. So this is looking at in around 2040, there's not a current need right now as far as level of service, but in 2040, it's looking that the level of service may be a C or D. What's being proposed is a roundabout at this intersection, and that would bring the level of service to A. Because it is a future need, this project is scored at a priority eight. There are two projects in here that are grouped together, so all of the priorities are something of, of nine.
So what, what were the inputs to presume that this one in 2040 will be a higher need?
So different types of projections as far as traffic conditions that went into the modeling for that.
That's precisely why, why I'm asking the question, right? Yes, if you really look at the feeders into this, there is no new construction other than the Town Hall Center that is coming. That's probably the only one that is going to add more traffic to that area, unless we are talking about extending Town Hall Drive to either Crabtree or connect to 540. I'm struggling to see the kind, and this is, in, in full disclosure, I stay in Downing Glen, right? I would love to see this improvement, but I still struggle to see what parameters are going to drive between now, I know it's 20 years out, that it is going to require a significant improvement.
And I would have to look at the details of, you know, the numbers that they used exactly and, and what were they were pulled from. A lot of times, there are, you know, regional models for transportation increases and where they selected that from, or whether or not it was sort of an overall increase in traffic. But no, and there's a lot of connectivity throughout the town as well, too. And thinking about, you know, where there may be new developments happening, there's a lot along Church Street that's happening as well that I see out there. So I think there could be different conditions. I would have to look a little bit more at what was used for that analysis.
Okay. I'll say, it doesn't work great now. I drive through there, you know, decently often. There are times in which it's backed up. I mean, that, so I wouldn't think, and I'll be honest, I'm not a super huge fan of roundabouts, but that probably would work okay at that intersection if given the level of traffic. I mean...
Yeah. I, I mean, having, having driven around the world, roundabouts is good, is the best solution for continuous flow of traffic. But knowing the American driving, drivers and, you know, their behavior, it doesn't work well for them. But I still prefer roundabouts because it allows continuous flow of traffic. It just needs more education.
Just a follow-up on that. Are we looking solely at the volume of traffic and the projected volume of traffic, or is there also a view of safety within the, the view? So has there been any studies around these things to look at where accidents have happened, you know, that and taking into consideration?
Yeah, my understanding is mostly based on traffic volumes at those intersections. Level of service was used mostly with this, as far as the analysis, but intersection locations were likely selected as far as, you know, safety being a consideration as well for the study. So I will jump onto the next one, which is on Church Street and Traybrook Drive and Park Place Avenue on the other side. This is a pedestrian-only improvement project, so it's looking at medians as well as high-visibility crosswalks. Because it's pedestrian-only, it's not associated with a level of service. And this project does score on, in the priority number one. It's something that we'll be looking at with some of the Church Street sidewalk improvements that'll be happening to see where we can incorporate some improvements.
So, all right, about this, so one of the problems I have when I go out the back off of Downing Glen, you know, they've done some, a similar thing there. So now the stop bar way back, but they've done nothing to change the signs that are there. They've done nothing to change the plantings. You can't see cars coming. So every time you have to stop and then you gotta pull up and sort of creep out and stop. And it just, I mean, I understand this is, it's great, but I, safety to have a crosswalk there, but is it really safer when everyone has to pull up to actually see? I just, I don't know. It's, it's a, it was like it was done as an afterthought without sort of considering the whole intersection. And I feel like there's, I don't know, room to do a little bit better, but...
So you mean improvements that have happened recently?
Well, in the last few years. I mean, that, yeah, on a geological scale recently, yeah. But, you know, it's just, if you go there, every time you go to the intersection, you have to pull up. And I felt there's always that risk when you pull up of something happening, because like the stop bars are just so far back past that crosswalk there.
And this intersection, especially during the morning timeframe, during the school time, becomes really, you know, almost dangerous, given that kids are kind of going back and forth. There is school on the other side, and school bus is kind of coming around that intersection. Is this good enough from that safety point of view? Or do you need, do we need to do something more to address safety?
And I think this is, you know, I would say, high-level recommendations that came through the study itself. There are things that could be looked at overall as, and as you can see, there are more line drawings on here. So when you get down to the engineering level, there may be some other considerations or things that could be tweaked or done slightly differently. So I would take these all at a higher level of, you know, improvements and recommendations to try and improve that level of service at some of the intersections.
And Member Roebuck has a comment also. Go ahead, Christine. All right, we can, we can just go forward, and if we need to come back to this, we'll just jump back.
Yeah, or she's able to put in the chat when she might be ready or...
Yeah, that's, I want you to know, I've got it up here, too.
Oh, okay. All right, so I will move on to the, the next one as well, and this is, oh.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory as we're going through this. This is an excellent information overview, but from the Planning and Zoning Board, this really is out of scope for us. So it's, it's interesting, but I think a lot of the questions around the design of some of the transportation isn't really relevant. And I just wanted to add that comment. I think it's, it's interesting, and I like the information, but we're still focused on planning and zoning of the residential and the commercial areas, not, not the transportation and the sidewalks.
I, I'm sorry, but I disagree, right? Part of planning for land and development needs to have consideration for transport. We have, we have got, what, $2 billion worth of biotech company coming in Morrisville. There will be a lot more traffic, and, you know, there will be more demand for residential as well. So if we don't address the, you know, traffic scenarios, road scenarios, congestion scenarios, I, I think we are doing a half-hearted job of planning as, as a Planning and Zoning Board. And I don't know if there is a separate board that looks at transportation plans either. So maybe if they are, then, you know, we can, we can look at it in a different way.
But, but I do understand what Chris is saying. We're not, I mean, some comments are probably worth having, but we're not really controlling what the design is here.
Sure. Just feedback so that they can take it back and see what can be done.
Yeah, and so these are all, I mean, informational items, things that are going on. It's helpful to hear, you know, based on different experiences or perspectives as well, the information that's coming forward. So I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm good with feedback as well. All right, is that, I'll go ahead and move on to the next one then. So this is similar to the last one. This is on Church Street at Downing Glen Drive. I think you were just mentioning...
This is the one I was talking about. Yeah, so they, maybe they'll fix it a little bit.
Put those all together. So again, this is pedestrian improvements only. It is gonna be looked at when, with the Church Street Sidewalk Improvement Project as well. It's a consideration to pull into there to make some improvements. Again, this is looking at, it is looking at high-visibility crosswalks as well as new ADA curbs and ramps. And like I said, these are recommendations that come from the consultant that puts together the plan as well. Once you get down into the details, there may be, maybe things that are tweaked or done, done differently as well. But it was a noted, noted intersection for pedestrian improvements.
Yeah, and the kind of what I was telling you, if you look to the right here down Church, I mean, there's the, the site triangle from the stop bar. I mean, there is really no clear site triangle. There's a lot of trees there. So that, I just, hopefully they can take that into more of, yeah.
All right, the next one is on, also on Church Street at Jeremiah Street. So this one is looking at, the intersection was studied, not a current need right now, but if you're looking out to 2040, the level of service would be B, which is not awful. But doing the, doing the improvement with the roundabout would bring it to a level of service A. So this was just a recommendation of a roundabout at this location. Perhaps, you know, safety may also raise to a different level, but right now, just based on it being a future need and a small change in the level of service, it is listed as priority nine in the report. The next one is looking at Morrisville Parkway and Davis Drive. I know everyone will be familiar with it, but the orientation of this on the slide, the way the map is done, is a little confusing, because Davis Drive, normally you drive like north-south on, it is showing to the left and to the right is Davis Drive, and then sort of the up and down is Morrisville Parkway. Looking at this intersection, the recommendation that was looked at for an improvement was adding an additional turn lane, left-hand turn lane onto Morrisville Parkway, and then from Morrisville Parkway, a right-hand turn lane onto Davis Drive. In the current situation, it's shown as a level of service F. Doing these improvements might have a small impact. It's still a level of service F, so, you know, that was one of the solutions that was looked at. It does have a probably very small impact in that. Just reporting out as far as what the study did, there may be other solutions that are, that are needed to solve some of the traffic issues there.
I mean, the big thing here is the right turn lane from Morrisville Parkway onto Davis Drive. If you come down Morrisville Parkway, it backs up like a half mile. I mean, if we could get everyone to stay in the left lane and allow that right lane to free flow, I think it would, you could improve it quite a bit right now, but I don't think you can make everyone do that. People don't think for everyone, so...
Yeah, so definitely a challenging intersection. It was studied. There's a need there, but turn lanes might not solve all of the problem. The next one, again, on Morrisville Parkway, this is at Blackridge Street, Creek Park Drive, just for orientation. Sometimes I know side streets might not always, the names of those might not always be super familiar with location. This is an older area, also down here on the lower left-hand corner is the Morrisville Fitness and Aquatic Center. Again, like I said, it's a little bit older because it doesn't have the new parking lot configuration. But what this is looking at is more of a controlled turn at this intersection as well as turn lanes that go on the median on the south side and on the north side to help control some, some of those turn movements. Based on current conditions, it's level of service F, making the changes would bring it up to a level of service C. So it, it does improve the intersection there. The next one's Morrisville Parkway and Crabtree Crossing Parkway. This, again, is intersection improvements only. So it's looking at high-visibility crosswalks, changing some timing at the intersection to help with the pedestrian movement. And, you know, it's priority number two because it is a pedestrian project. The next one here is Morrisville Parkway and NC-54. So this one currently operates at a level of service E. I'll explain the improvements, but similar to the Davis Drive, it's still very small change. It still operates at a level of service E. By adding, when you're on Morrisville Parkway, making a right-hand turn, there is two turn lanes that go down. And then when you're on NC-54, going onto Morrisville Parkway, making a left-hand turn, there is two turn lanes instead of one. So adding the turn lanes doesn't really improve the level of service, but it may, overall, it may help somewhat. So that was what was looked at at that location. The second to last one here is on NC-54 and Key Bridge Drive, just for orientation. The next intersection up from here is Morrisville Carpenter Aviation, just to put that into perspective. What we're looking at at this intersection is actually putting a light, having a, going northbound, a right-hand turn lane, and then having left and right turn lanes out of, off of Key Bridge Drive as well. So doing those changes, it's operating currently at a level of service F, and doing the changes would bring it to level of service C. And then the last one is looking here on Slater Road. So currently, Slater Road does have, it's more of a through street. There's no stop signs, no stoplights on Slater Road. The cross street does have stop signs itself. So what's being proposed here in this analysis is having a stoplight, having high-visibility crosswalks to help with that location. And it's currently a level of service E or F. Doing the improvements would bring it to A or B. So these are the intersections that were studied. So overview of the intersection study that happened, based on different priorities of the town and where projects are happening and where there might be an opportunity to address some of these, those will be incorporated along the way. So I don't have any, you know, other than knowing like the Church Street sidewalks, project will incorporate some pedestrian improvements. I don't have any specific, you know, schedule to go along with this, but more of an informational presentation of what was found with the study.
Just a quick process question. Is there anything that would trigger a reprioritization or a review? So as an example, if one of the major currently unfunded projects gets funded, does that trigger a review of the prioritization, or is it just time-based?
Yeah, and, and the prioritization of this, you know, I think there's flexibility. How it was done in the report itself is really solely focused on pedestrian projects first, the ones that have current needs, and then looking at that gap of level of service, which one increases that level of service gap the, the most? So where do you see the most improvement? And they are prioritized based on that. I think if there is, you know, a project that came up along the way and it's, you know, we had the study done, this is a recommended improvement, if there's a way to incorporate things along the way, I'd say more of a high-level prioritization of what was provided. All right, the next one is on regional transportation projects and studies. So there's a lot of things going on around the region. We have... We have, I'll just do some overviews of different projects, kind of what the project is, what the status is, and maybe where it's headed for some of these. So the Greater Triangle commuter rail project, it is being led by Go Triangle. It has approximately 43 miles, 15 commuter rail stops along the way. Morrisville is, would be one of the locations that would have a stop. We often just refer to it as the proposed station in Morrisville, which would be located in the TOD zoning area, which is at McCrimmon and C-54, so in that area for perspective. Right now, Go Triangle is working on finalizing some different feasibility studies. There's been a lot, the freight, there's a freight lines that operate along this corridor, so it's an existing rail corridor. There would be a new line for commuter rail added into it, but looking at some of those conflicts and efficiencies and whether or not there's anything that would be, you know, real issues or things that can be addressed along the way. So there's some finalization going on with that study that will hopefully, a draft will come out in May to take a look at, and then sometime in the summer or fall timeframe, Go Triangle is looking at having local and regional leadership provide a direction on this, on the project, you know, to go forward with it, which is Go Triangle's anticipation. And in going forward, they would anticipate, or looking at the goal of a 2030 schedule for opening commuter rail with that. So there's lots of steps along the way, but the goal would be 2030 for that if the project is pursued. I think there will be some critical points happening later this year and decisions made. And I just, I threw a slide in here as well. This was kind of the station, possible station location I was mentioning with McCrimmon and then Chapel Hill Road or NC-54. This is as a commuter rail. It doesn't operate like a subway where you don't have any parking associated with it. It is thought of more of commuters that could be using the commuter rails. There are park-and-ride lots that'll be associated with most of the facilities. Right now, it looks like, you know, Morrisville may need 150 spaces that goes along with it. Of course, bicycle and pedestrian facilities are also important. And what's being studied as far as operation for the train is looking at eight trains in each direction during the peak AM and PM time periods, and then for the midday and evening trains, two in each direction. So there's different models and combinations, but this one seems to be the one that's working out the best for this particular line. The next project I want to mention is the Wake Bus Rapid Transit, so BRT. The extension, they're looking at doing an extension to the west and the south of planned BRT that's happening out of the downtown Raleigh. So Morrisville is located in the Western Study Area. CAMPO, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, is leading this study, and what we're looking at, I will go ahead and go to the next slide just so that this is a little bigger. You'll see Raleigh over to Cary, there's this red line with dots on it. This is a planned rapid bus transit. And then from the Cary Depot over to RTP or the regional, also the Regional Transit Centers over there, which it would connect to, is what's being studied right now. There is currently public engagement going on. These are the three alternative routes that are being considered, so I would also encourage you, I put a lot of websites on these regional ones with the Wake BRT Extensions Study dot com. There is public engagement underway through March, I mean, April 30th, and getting feedback on these different routes. NC-54 here is pretty much following that entire road is Alternative One. Alternative Two follows mostly that same alignment, except it does go up Evans around McCrimmon. We know there's a lot of new development, a lot of interest along the McCrimmon corridor over there, which might benefit from rapid transit or, yeah, bus rapid transit. And the third alternative that is put in there as well is the bus route would come up NC-54, go along Morrisville Parkway, up Davis Drive, and then connect back over. So the consultants with, and working with CAMPO as well, we're looking at some different options. There might be different needs in the community versus getting to employment centers versus getting to shopping or doctor's appointments or just residential uses, and trying to get a wide variety of feedback on these. One thing that you'll notice, at least with the Alternative Three that goes along Davis Drive, is it doesn't, wouldn't connect to the proposed commuter rail station in Morrisville, and the first two options do. So there's a variety of things that'll be considered, but public input is being solicited right now.
So with both the railway commuter and this rapid transport, I suppose there would be an interplay with the Morrisville Town Shuttles as well, so that, you know, these then become the feeder points for people to go into perimeter Parkway or, you know, other parts of the town?
Yeah, and you mentioned the Morrisville Smart Shuttle as well.
Yes.
Yeah, and so what we would look at is, you know, if we get a commuter rail station and that becomes kind of a little transit, more of a little transit hub there, a need for our node might, you know, I think there would be, you know, qualify for having a node there as well, and looking at those different changes and where it might make sense to evaluate if there's new nodes that are needed or changes to them. But definitely, I think with any of the transit that's being proposed, connections is very important to look at. The next item is the Triangle Bike Way Study. So in March, a draft of this Bike Way Study was, I guess, presented, and it's looking at a about 23-mile shared use path going from Raleigh to Chapel Hill. It's primarily along the I-40 corridor, however, there are places where it comes off of that a little bit. So this was, and I'll go ahead and get to a few graphics as well. It was led by the two MPOs in the area, so CAMPO as well as DCHC MPO, to put together this study, look at, you know, feasibility and cost. There's a lot of momentum behind the project itself. It's very interesting to have another opportunity for different type of mode of transportation, as well as sometimes when you have more longer-distance bike riders or commuters, having a dedicated facility that's not shared but also goes along the I-40 corridor as well. This one, I know because it's a screenshot, sometimes it doesn't show up as well, was just kind of highlighting a little bit in the Morrisville area. It will, would run along the northern side of Morrisville, so have opportunities to, for people using it or getting to it to connect to and from Morrisville as well, and thinking about either our greenway networks or sidewalk networks and different things. But it is an exciting opportunity to connect different communities together. What they would be looking at, and this could vary in some places, but generally speaking, dedicated bike path and then a separate pedestrian path on the side as well. And this was, you know, provided by, pulled together by the consultants that had put together the plan, so it was an example of I-40 and separated bicycle facility that would be along it as well. And with that, I was going to see if there was any other additional questions or comments.
Thank you. David, any comments? Tim?
I'm just trying to get my head around all the development that is coming into the town or, you know, higher demand, and beyond what we currently have, you know, what other announcements do we need to make? Go ahead.
Josh?
Yeah, I actually did have maybe a comment about the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Has there been any amendments to, I guess, there's been, like, for example, the TOD district, has the Comprehensive Transportation Plan been updated to show that?
Currently, yeah, there has not been any amendments to it since it was approved in 2019. Some things, you know, we would be looking at, for example, with the Triangle Bike Way. The Town Council did also approve at the last Town Council meeting, a general resolution of support, you know, regional support for the Triangle Bike Way. And, you know, that's an example of where we might want to look at, where we might want to have some, making sure there's connections to it with, say, our greenway network or other types of facilities. And I think there's an opportunity to, you know, make tweaks along the way, but we also have, every, you know, every five years or so, the plan can be updated, and so we might look at a more, a little bit more of a thorough update at some point in time as well, too. But as of right now, there has been no changes since it was adopted.
I just, I know that one of the action items was that it should be amended regularly to comply with the, some emergent information, so I just think that that should be looked at again.
Looked at, okay.
And especially with the Smart Shuttle also being incorporated into the town to address the town's evolving needs.
Remember, Michael, I think that's a great point and a good segue into something I was going to mention later. As you can tell, Danielle has really hit the ground running since she started in September and really gotten up to speed on the many, many transportation initiatives going on right now. One of the things that she is looking to bring back to in the next couple of months is we're taking stock of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, all the recommended actions, what's been completed, what's in progress, what's left, and she'll be presenting that information to you so you can make a recommendation to Town Council on what our priorities should be moving forward in terms of implementing that plan. So a lot of this presentation, some of the items in here were recommendations from that plan, so it'll be good background for you when you have that discussion a couple of months from now.
Yeah, that's great. Chris Roebuck has a comment.
No, I just wanted to state, I thought this was an excellent presentation because of the simplicity. Every slide is self-explanatory, so it makes it very easy for us to share the link to other residents and be able to share the plan and for them to be able to understand it. So it was an excellent presentation. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. It was good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? There's a lot of stuff going on around town.
Thank you. All right, number six, do we have any public comment? Looks like no. We can move on to staff comments.
So I will just jump in to our latest March newsletter. You may recall that the PDB reviewed a rezoning application on Wilson Road not that long ago, so that was recently approved by the Town Council. That's seven lots at 1624 Wilson Road. We also recently approved a site plan for Par for Success, which is looking to be located up at the Shiloh Crossing Shopping Center. And in terms of some of the larger projects that we're working on, a contract has been executed. It's great to be able to share the name with you with HR and A to start the town's efforts into implementation of the Affordable Housing Plan. So we have a kickoff meeting with them next week, actually, but looking forward to really getting started on that. And Senior Planner Kitridge will be leading that project, and I know she's excited to have that contract executed as well. Planning Manager Lawson was before you at the last meeting discussing potential amendments to the tree preservation, landscaping, common open area sections of the UDO. We also, he also presented to the Town Council a similar presentation Tuesday night. So we are knee-deep into drafting and hope to have something out on the website for the community, including our residents and the development community, to start commenting on here very soon, and still aiming to have that before you on March 12th so that this board could start the review of those proposed amendments. And then in terms of land use plan implementation, I think we've talked a little bit about the UDO update that would align the overall UDO with the vision in that plan. Those RFPs were received earlier this year. We conducted some interviews last week, so we're continuing to move forward with that selection process as well. And that's a UDO update, as well as some additional small area planning for what we've been referring to as TOD West and South. That's all I have, Chairman.
All right, thank you. Do we have any comments?
I did have one question. Maybe Danielle, you can help me with that. So recently, the federal government allocated $2 billion to North Carolina for road improvements and infrastructure improvements. I don't know whether they have made the allocations or not, but is, are there things that the town's residents can do to influence some of that decision so that there is increased funding available for the various projects in the town? If there is, we need to make a concerted effort to get the word out to the citizens so that they can make, you know, put some influence in that.
Yeah, and are you talking, related to like transportation, is that said related to transportation or?
In general, right? I believe the federal government has approved $2 billion. I know with the inflation, some of that has gone away, but still, it's a sizable amount that can be used for various projects we have.
Yeah, and I have to see as far as, yeah, where things sort of trickle to, at least on the transportation side, but I know there's a lot of federal money out there trickling into places, and we work closely with CAMPO, so the Metropolitan Planning Organization that does a lot of regional work in helping also prioritize things that get in a state transportation improvement program. So I know there's things on their radar and our radar, as well as, you know, some of the larger projects like commuter rail and things, too. But certainly, I think if we're, you know, hear about things that are coming along, we also try to work closely with our communications team to get information out there where there's opportunities for public to engage or have, yeah, times to comment on things, too.
I was more interested in knowing if we call the senators and the congressmen and whoever to try and influence some of that money, right? Because commenting, yes, we came into a meeting, commented, went away, there is no kind of really the weight behind it.
Yeah, I don't have any good suggestions right now, only because I'm not sure where the money is coming to and from at the moment, but we'll look into that a little bit more.
Okay, and that's part of the reason why we had all these, because this helps. You know, having the priorities means that we might have a chance to do that, so... Josh?
No, I'll reiterate what Chris said. That was a very presentation, very informative.
Tim, any other? David?
Yeah, just thank you for your time with that presentation. It was very, very helpful.
Chris, do you have any final comments?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Any other events or anything? It's blank, there's nothing, okay. So do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Send your seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we need a roll call? Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone.